Recording in progress.
Madam Clerk, the time is 6:15 PM. I call to order this special closed session of the City Council on Management of Emeryville Services Authority. Excuse me. This meeting is being conducted in person at 1333 Park Avenue here in Emeryville, California. The City Council welcomes comments, criticisms, and about the, including criticisms about the policies, procedures, programs, or services of the city, or of the acts or missions of the City Council. Speakers shall not use threatening, profane, or abusive language which disrupts, disturbs, or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of the City Council's successor agency, management of Emeryville Services Authority, or related meeting. The city is committed to maintaining a workplace free of unlawful harassment and is mindful that the city staff regularly attend council meetings. Discriminatory statements or conduct that would potentially violate the Fair Employment and Housing Act such as statements or conduct that is hostile, intimidating, oppressive, or abusive, is per se disruptive to a meeting and will not be tolerated. At this time, Madam Clerk, will you please call a roll?
Councilmember Bowders?
Here.
Councilmember Carr is absent. Councilmember Pryforce is absent. Vice Mayor Mora?
Present.
And Mayor Welch.
Here. Item three is ex parte communications. Members, do any of you have ex parte communications to report for this agenda? No? Now that's, now is the time for public comment on closed session items. Any member of the public that would like to comment on the closed session items can do so now for two minutes.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council members. My name is Adrienne Robinson. I work for the Police Department as a police evidence technician. I am an SEIU member, and I've been employed with the city almost thirty-five years. My previous position was crime analyst. Unfortunately, in 2018, due to budget cuts, the crime analyst position was eliminated. Thereafter, I was assigned to property and evidence and was Y-rated, receiving no COLAs for five years until this last contract, which increased my monthly wages by sixteen dollars. Now I can receive COLA increases, and I'm grateful for the small increase, and to the city for paying the IRS. However, the increase I receive will be short-lived. Upon receiving the next five percent COLA and having to pay six point two percent, two-hundred-and-forty-three dollars per check beginning in July, will leave me with a deficit of negative one point two percent. My salary will be below the increase I just received, and when there's an extra paycheck during the month, I will be paying approximately seven hundred and thirty-three dollars to the IRS. The unexpected IRS deduction and implementation of the biweekly payroll schedule will greatly impact my family. I was here when Mesa opted out of paying into Social Security to save money. During that time, I don't remember having a choice in that decision, but I remember the city advising employees to be sure that we had forty quarters paid into the IRS. Twenty-five years later, no fault of the employees and an unforeseen circumstance for the city, we're having to face the burden of paying six point two percent in addition to our other deductions, namely PERS. This is creating a hardship for all of us. I am praying the city will help us ease into this transition by offsetting the amount with an increase. The same was done during the transition of our employee PERS contribution. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker.
You answer counsel, Judge Callahan. Call friends, may he rest in peace. I'm here today to ask that you open Emeryville v. the United States, Brooklyn Naval Yard v. the US, and Nash Coffee Iaquel, with an understanding to John Kevin Anderson, Nuremberg understanding. Church of the Gardens, the Bank of Ohio is understood to Juan Rashan. Open Communication, the shooting in Chester, Pennsylvania, what is wondered to C-SPAN. It's no understanding I can't say I love you. A German intern president in what is wondered to New Year's, raising the kid, myself, we'll call it the Gobelus Rest. To the iHeart Country Music Festival and what is wondered as an application. Why he didn't fly, what we'll call Operation Charlie organizes troops, we don't understand instead of his fetal offsprings. Board, administrative question is asked to the state, and what is wondered to selling, I guess you'd say, a dirty Kevin or an FBI agent instead of him being the next excellency of England, isn't understood as a mass application to Beirut, the shooting of the iHeart radio, and the opening up of Emeryville v. the United States in view of questions in HRO and any open SQL query integrations. Thank you.
Next speaker. Are there any other speakers?
Hello, I'm Amber Evans, and these are conversations I've been having with my coworkers. If the Social Security goes into effect, I don't think I'll still be working here in January. I just moved in, a new renter, has not considered, sorry, I have a cold and I don't think I should take off my mask. And the six percent reduction in my pay, I don't know how I will pay the bills with the kids' daycare. If we don't get any Social Security because of the windfall provision in our pensions, then how do we ever see this money back? I'll have to work after I retire. If I stop paying my deferred compensation, it's nowhere near the six point two percent. I did not budget for this, and now open enrollment for health care is passed. College for my son, daughter, is forty to sixty thousand dollars a year. How do I tell my kid there's less to help them? They'll take on debt for this? I'll have to work fifty hours overtime to make up the loss from Social Security, but who would approve that? I just lost my housing through a no-fault eviction. If I have to pay eight hundred dollars more a month, that's what my aunt had to pay when she moved, got evicted, so that's what I told. "Well, I can't even talk about that," was the response. These are the conversations I have with my coworkers who are making over a hundred thousand a year, not even the hardest hit. People outside of City Hall make less than that. But in City Hall, there are single parents, foster parents, caring for the elderly parents, and many, many renters. We don't expect people making over a hundred thousand to be renters, but here in the Bay Area, that's what happens, and they're facing the housing costs. And you know what? And it was clearly understood by the council when you adopted the new master fee schedule that we were all facing escalating cost of living. That's what happened with the fee schedule.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, please.
I just want to clarify, this is for items on the agenda, correct? Okay, all right, thank you. Good evening, Mayor, good evening, counsel. I'm here speaking tonight, Navarro Oaks, as interim president of the Emeryville Chapter of SEIU and as an employee of the planning division for over ten years. The situation with docking our pay six point two percent, you know, people are responsible for their own retirement, and the city must also be responsible to its employees. By removing six point two from our income, you're completely undermining the negotiation processes just take place. So our COLAs over three years totaling fifteen percent are now effectively eight point eight percent. And I'm curious as to how you really think the city of Emeryville can stay competitive with neighboring cities, what the incentive is for people to keep working here when this is all short notice, this is sprung on us, it's clearly a huge impact to all of us financially, and then places like Oakland have fourteen percent for their COLAs over the same time period. How do you expect to retain your employees? How do you expect to attract employees? Why would someone come here, especially when they're seeing how well-regarded employees are by council? How do you expect to be competitive? And instead of working to retain the employees, instead of insisting on being attractive employees, you're taking the position of letting employees take the hit. You're waiting to see who will leave before changing course. Is that really the pertinent action to see who will leave? Do you want to lose a senior civil engineer? Do you want to lose someone who has your public-facing projects? Not to mention all the people you can't see that are working day-to-day, but have been working here hard to make the city function for years and years. You know, on a personal note, I'm just trying to figure out how you, as individuals, are seeing this, because I'm looking at this and I'm seeing how it isn't going to impact my family, and it's going to take out my utilities.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker. Any other speakers?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members. My name is Matt Anderson. I'm a five-year employee of the Public Works Department. I work for the Environmental Programs Division. I'm reading this on behalf of my colleague in SEIU. The workers of Emeryville deserve better from you, counsel. You had all the cards on the table from the IRS, or at least the bones of what was about to come down on us, and you waited. You waited, and waited, and waited. We saw CPI rise, and rise, and rise. We patiently waited for our negotiations to go through, as we thought you were doing your due diligence on various items. But now we know that you knew the details in February of this year of what was about to come down on us from the IRS and Social Security. SEIU and our membership were left in the dark. You effectively handcuffed us into our deal. This is unacceptable. We deserve transparency and fair treatment. You are about to see an exodus from our city like none seen before. Kudos on giving us the salary market increases and COLA corrections from the very conservative increases SEIU received during the COVID era. You've now just barely caught up to sniffing distance of what our neighbors are paying, and we can finally say we'll be able to keep our talented people who have chosen to work for this beautiful city. Oh, but wait, now that we've caught up, we now have Social Security looming and here to lop off six point two percent off of our ankles to bring us back down to being the little city that could, next to our counterparts in Berkeley, Oakland, and Alameda? Hey, what do they pay there in Berkeley? Oh, wow, that much? Oh, what, retirement over there is two point seven percent at fifty-five, which is better than Emeryville, too? Oh, wow, they have great benefits, remote work, and flexible schedules as well. Hmm, what are the perks of staying to work in Emeryville? It's easy math.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, please.
Dear council members, my name is Monica Centeno. I'm an SEIU member and employee of Emeryville. I'm an accounting technician in the finance department for nearly five years. I want to express how disheartened I am. With this dual contribution, my pay will decrease by almost fifteen percent. Furthermore, the city wants to change to a biweekly paycheck schedule beginning in July. Most of us don't want this change. I've done calculations to see how the Social Security and biweekly will affect me. My net pay will dwindle, and I'm feeling worried and distressed. My income and benefits package are no longer considered competitive with other cities and agencies in the Bay Area. I've had conversations with multiple coworkers who are going to consider finding new employment. They have to decrease their deferred compensation contribution, find a second job or a side hustle to fill the gap. The Social Security withholding plus the biweekly schedule will significantly affect our income during these already hard financial times. I'm a good employee and a hard worker, but I'm beginning to feel that I don't matter much to my employer. I'm just a number to them. But in my family, I'm vital. I support three children, have a mortgage. My oldest son is in college. My middle son starts college in the fall. My youngest son starts fifth grade in the fall. My wages go towards a stable life and hopeful future for them. These planned, these planned changes will create a financial hardship that I'm not going to be able to budget away. Please reconsider options to help your employees. It'll mean so much to us. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm reading a message from a member that couldn't make it tonight. My name is Michael Roberts, SEIU member. Dear City Council members, my name is Andrea Arrega, and I work for the Finance Department as an accountant. I have been with the city for nearly five years. I am writing to the council to express my concern about six point two percent being deducted from my, from all Mesa employees. I am not seeking special treatment, but rather fairness in rectifying an error that was beyond our control. Paying the six point two percent Social Security tax will be a financial burden. At my previous local city government position, we paid into both CalPERS and Social Security. My net pay was low, and that is one of the reasons I sought employment elsewhere. When I joined the city of Emeryville, one of the appealing features was that the understanding that employees do not contribute to Social Security. This led me to believe I had discovered a stable, long-term employment opportunity. Now, now you want me to change the terms of employment. Deducting the six point two percent from my paycheck will pose a significant financial challenge, and I will have to seek an additional source of income to make up the difference. As the city of Emeryville emphasizes work-life balance, this change threatens to impede the time I can spend with my family. I must support two daughters in the Bay Area, one of the costliest places to raise a family. With one of my daughters beginning college this summer, my financial responsibilities are mounting while my earnings diminish. I will need to explore options such as a part-time job, side hustle, or potentially seeking alternative employment to offset the resulting shortfall. With a Social Security deduction and future biweekly pay schedule, my workload is increasing, but my pay is decreasing. This does not make sense. I respectfully urge the City Council to reconsider their decision and ensure that their employees are fully compensated and made whole. I also have a second message from another SEIU member. With due respect, SEIU-
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, please.
My name is Ryan Fettis. I'm a field representative for SEIU Local Ten to One. I'm reading an anonymous message from one of our members. With due respect, SEIU members have come before you tonight to ask that you reconsider assisting us with this additional deduction in pay of six point two percent. Please let it be clear that members are not asking the city to pay their Social Security retirement, but to assist in offsetting this deduction brought upon them by no fault of their own. In all fairness, SEIU employees are already contributing to a portion of CalPERS pension plan, at least seven percent plus. Employees were hired with the understanding that they will not be contributing to Social Security and accepted their positions as such. We all love our jobs and have been with the city for ten years plus, but we think that we should say something. Please don't let this be a hardship for families. A huge deduction of at least three point two percent SSA and CalPERS will be critical to everyone. And then just as a field representative, we're bringing our union members here again tonight to ask you to please listen to them. Listen not just with your ears, but with your hearts, understand what this deduction is going to mean to their home and family lives, and we think that you are capable people, we think that you are empathetic people, and please show us that. We're going to be showing, we're going to be returning to the negotiation table on Friday, and we hope that we will see more progress than what we've seen in the past. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, or any other speakers?
Good evening, council members. My name is Josie Aaron, Management Analyst in Public Works, and I'm the President of our Managers Association, and we have some members here tonight. And so while receiving Social Security is a benefit in the long term, a six point two percent pay cut is an immediate burden on staff in the short term. This pay completely eliminates the five percent COLA that we receive, or are set to receive in July, and additionally wipes out median adjustments for a handful of positions. Not only are we now not able to keep up with inflation, but our wages are now not catching up with comparable classifications. We are falling behind. As a management analyst, I was set to receive a five percent COLA and a one point three percent adjustment July first. So instead of seeing a six point three increase, I'm seeing a six point two decrease, which means four hundred and eighty dollars less per paycheck, I mean, per month, which is the amount of my student loan payment and my internet bill. The city is not being generous. The city fulfilled its obligation to the IRS, and now the city needs to fulfill its obligation to its staff. To date, the city has not presented any path forward to mitigate this immediate burden on staff. Executive city management didn't even run the numbers on our proposal, a very reasonable proposal that can't put forward. As a young person, I will not see Social Security for literally thirty years. I am thirty-two years old. I am being told that I should be grateful for this despite having my pay cut by six point two percent for a benefit that I may never see fully realized. If you want young people to come here and stay here and build their career in Emeryville, you need to provide them a sustainable way forward to do that. We're asking you to mitigate the impact. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker.
My name is Nick, and I'm currently an assistant to, working for, working the front desk of City Hall and supporting the City Manager's Office. My current mandated contributions to retirement and medical are around sixteen percent of my paycheck, and with Social Security being added, it'll be around twenty-two percent. Twenty-two percent of your check being taken out before having to pay taxes in this economy isn't easy. On top of that, we have to account for five hours of less pay per check because we're switching from bimonthly to biweekly pay. With Social Security and biweekly pay being implemented at the same time, each of my paychecks would be lower than when I first started to work for the city in December. I love my job here, and I honestly have the best bosses anyone could ask for, but decisions like this make it harder to live in the Bay Area, and this has contributed to my decision to leave Emeryville and work for Oakland. I hope council and management can work together to find a solution that will hopefully help retain other employees. Thanks.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, or any other speakers? Last call for speakers. Public comment is now closed. Madam Clerk, we'll be taking item five and all the subitems in closed session. The time is 6:36 PM. We are adjourned to closed session.
Recording stopped.
Recording in progress.
Seven forty-five P. M. We have returned from closed session. Mister City Attorney, do you mind reporting out?
Thank you, Mayor Welch. There was no reportable action taken in closed session tonight.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, the time is still seven forty-five. This meeting has been adjourned. Madam Clerk, the time is seven forty-five P. M. I call to order the City of Emeryville as successor agency to the Emeryville Redevelopment Agency. This meeting is being conducted in person at Thirteenth Thirty Park Avenue here in Emeryville. The City Council welcomes comments, including criticism about the policies, procedures, programs, or services of the city, or of the acts or emissions of the City Council. Speakers shall not use threatening, profane, or abusive language which disrupts, disturbs, or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of a City Council, successor agency, management of Emeryville Services Authority, or related meeting. The city is committed to maintaining a workplace free of unlawful harassment and is mindful that city staff regularly attend council meetings. Discriminatory statements or conduct that would potentially violate the Fair Employment and Housing Act such as statements or conduct that is hostile, intimidating, oppressive, or abusive is per se disruptive to a meeting and will not be tolerated. Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Councilmember Bouters.
Here.
Councilmember Carr.
Present.
Councilmember Pryforce.
Here.
Vice Mayor Mora.
Present.
And Mayor Welch.
Here. Item three is approval of the final agenda. Members, we have a motion on the final agenda.
I move approval.
Second.
Madam Clerk, we have a motion and second. The roll, please.
Councilmember Bouters.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Mora.
Aye.
And Mayor Welch.
Aye. Item four is ex parte communications. Members, please review the agenda. Does anyone have any ex parte communications to report? Seeing none, thank you. Now is the time for public comment for the consent agenda and items on on the agenda. Any member of the public that wishes to make a comment on the consent agenda or items on on the agenda can do so now for two minutes.
I was gonna print this, by the way, but my printer broke, so I'll read it from my phone. By the way, my name is Joyce Cunningham. I'm a commercial real estate broker with Cushman and Wakefield. I'm here on behalf of the business owners and leasing representative and leasing the property at the corner of Horton and Hubbard, the Rug Depot. As a real estate professional, thought the council needed to hear how the Forty Street closures will negatively impact all business owners and give my perspective. Council adopted a plan last July twenty twenty-three and not heard much of anything. It's been very a stealth project since that time, and the website has never been updated. The adoption of full-street closures along four unsignalized streets will create zero access to impacted properties. This negatively affects all businesses located along these streets by not recognizing how retailers, industrials, you receive merchandise. First of all, I want to address office vacancy at this point. Emeryville has a total building base of three-point-two million square feet. Office vacancy currently stands today at one million square feet, available for lease and/or sublease, which is very important. Rates are up from Q-four twenty-three. Life Science Office Vacancy combined today is forty-six-point-five percent. With another two-point-five million square feet of proposed projects under entitlement, entitlement process, or on hold indefinitely. What people don't recognize is the life science market is dead and will not return anytime soon. A lot of developers are saying potentially for another ten years. They don't have the funding. For closure of Bay Area businesses, laying off employees, and closing the doors is what we hear of every day. With that said, it's our understanding the City of Emeryville currently has a bus budget deficit of four-point-six million dollars. Economic viability of Emeryville is to support business operators. Businesses pay annual taxes.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, please.
Another business owner telling us we can't have nice things in our town because it's an emergency. I've lived here for forty-two years. It's always an emergency, and we always have to be giving businesses more than their fair share. But I guess at least most of you on this council, you do need to be reminded that businesses are here at our pleasure insofar as the California Constitution allows us to moderate their behavior. They're here at our pleasure. So, you know, forty-two years of hearing that the House is on fire and we is an emergency and we've got to give away the store to the businesses and we've got to put the businesses in the driver's seat or all everything, all hell will break loose. It's businesses what matter. The business of Emeryville is business. I say bullshit. You know, I'm just, I'm tired of hearing it. But the reason why I'm here speaking right now is because this is the successor agency, and there might be some people that want to speak about the successor agency, but they can't here tonight. Why not? Because they might be in a wheelchair. And if they're in a wheelchair, they can't enter this room. They can't get in here. Why? Because the the normal condition is is an extant down there on the garden level. The the handicap entrance door, the push button doesn't work. It's perennial problem. Ask John Bouters. Is it a perennial problem? He'll tell you yes. So it's not working, and it's rarely working here. So right now, this is not equitable because people in wheelchairs can't be here right now. So, I mean, I don't even know if this is a duly this would satisfy the Brown Act if people in wheelchairs can't be here. I think the meeting might actually not even be a duly noticed or a legitimate legal meeting. So no wheelchairs allowed here.
Thank you for your comment. Any other speakers?
The Butterner Properties will be negatively impacted by the Forty Street molding mold project with particular reference to the closures of Hubbard Street and three other unsignalized streets. Butterner Properties is concerned that their that these subject street closures were planned without substantive analysis in the study of their impacts. These are serious submissions has caused Butterner Properties commission its own comprehensive study of existing and future project area traffic and consultation. To that end, it retained Abrams Associate Traffic Engineering Incorporated to review and analyze existing and future traffic operations on Forty Street with and without the proposed project, taking into account the impact of other transportation plans, including lane removals. The principal findings of the Abrams traffic study were that it is a foregone conclusion that the planned street closures will cause queuing, congestion, and access problems. Closure of Hubbard and Holden Streets would be detrimental to Butterner Properties' planned redevelopment of their properties as well as adversely impact the viability of several small businesses located within the area, including specific homes and gardens, Rug Depot, Pacific Flooring Supply. The closure of Hubbard and Holden Streets would force more traffic onto Horton Street and increase congestion at the Forty Street traffic signal, which is already the only place to turn left on the Forty Street from Butterner's affected properties. The proposed street closures, as well as the dedicated bus lanes in each direction at Forty Street, would result in significant traffic congestion as well as negatively impact access to both large and small businesses on both the north and south sides of Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, please.
To the City Council of Emeryville for always hearing the voices of your constituency. My name is Deborah Hemi, and my family and I are the owners of two properties in Emeryville, four-zero-four-five Horton Street and four-zero-five-six Hubbard Street. My parents bought these buildings in nineteen eighty-three and operated a wholesale home textile business for thirty-six years from there. I used to roller skate around the warehouse in the nineteen eighties after school. It's been wonderful to see the incredible development of the City of Emeryville over the years. A quick but relevant story. In two thousand nine, when Age Song, now Watermark, assisted living facility was built, the sidewalks on both sides of Hubbard, sorry, of Horton Street, were constructed, making it impossible for forty-foot containers to access our three loading docks on Horton Street. After thirty years of healthy business, we could no longer receive, hold, or distribute inventory, the crux of our wholesale business. My mother and father were forced to close down their wholesale business, empty the Horton Street building, and reinvent themselves as a retailer on the Hubbard property, keeping their five warehouse and office employees employed. Thank God, and they're still with us today. Rug Depot Outlet became an anchor independent retailer with the within the home furnishings community in the area with Pottery &amp; Beyond, Granite Expo, Pacific Flooring Supply, Decorium Interior Motions, and more. Simultaneously, we tried to rent the Horton Street property. It became very apparent that every tenant we met with needed parking and/or loading dockability, just like we did. The Horton Street building has remained empty since two thousand and nine, almost fifteen years. Between two thousand and sixteen and two thousand and nineteen, my father proposed various scenarios to the planning commission to move our retail business to the empty Horton building and ask for red curbs across Horton Street to re-enable trucks to make the turn into our loading docks. Both requests were denied or tied to over half a million dollars of permit fees. I'm here today not to try and stop the multimodal project.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker.
This is a, hi, Board. Emeryville v. the U.S. This is a memorandum to the United States Supreme Court for a requestment of docket. And Emeryville v. the U.S., Ashcroft v. Iaquel, and Brooklyn Naval Yard v. the U.S., I move against a requestment against the state. I'd like to ask a requestment in view of Executive Order thirteen zero eight-eight, said a jalapeno and sugar with the groups. What's wondered to Hasgonya and Basnia, Slana Milanovic is shooter during his confirmation, and how that is wondered to Willis Jensen, L.L.P. at thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen, and Noel's ninety days at sixteen, as a trial application in view of the ninety-four, ninety-five going into the election, where there's thirty members of the House and ten men of the Senate that confirm a question to letting a I-O-N-O terrorist into the state based on the wonderment to Nuremberg. I quietly, humbly, and ask that the state open up all of the Emeryville v. the United States against the state of Michigan and justify questions as a question to have in view of a memorandum to the intending to prepare a petition for a writ of certiorari, a booklet form and pay to the United States Supreme Court based on the search for requestment. And then a requestment to Hare v. the United States. Thank you.
Next speaker, please. Any other speakers? All right, public comment is now closed. Item six is the consent calendar. Members, do any of you want to pull an item for discussion, or do we have a motion on the consent calendar?
Motion to approve the consent count.
I'll second the motion.
Motion and a second. Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Councilmember Bouters.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Mora.
Aye.
And Mayor Welch.
Aye. There are no action items. Madam Clerk, the time is seven fifty-eight. This meeting is adjourned. Madam Clerk, the time is still seven fifty-eight P. M. I call to order this meeting of the Emeryville City Council. This meeting is being conducted in person at Thirteenth Thirty Park Avenue here in Emeryville. The City Council welcomes comments, including criticisms about the policies, procedures, programs, or services of the city, or of the acts or emissions of the City Council. Speakers shall not use threatening, profane, or abusive language which disrupts, disturbs, or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of a City Council, successor agency, management of Emeryville Services Authority, or related meeting. The city is committed to maintaining a workplace free of unlawful harassment and is mindful that city staff regularly attend council meetings. Discriminatory statements or conduct that would potentially violate the Fair Employment and Housing Act such as statements or conduct that is hostile, intimidating, oppressive, or abusive is per se disruptive to a meeting and will not be tolerated. Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Councilmember Bouters.
Here.
Councilmember Carr.
Here.
Councilmember Pryforce.
Here.
Vice Mayor Mora.
Here.
And Mayor Welch.
Here. Item three is approval of the final agenda. Members, we have a motion on the final agenda.
To approve the agenda.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Councilmember Bouters.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Mora.
Aye.
And Mayor Welch.
Aye. We have two special orders of the day. Item four-point-one is the proclamation of the City Council of the City of Emeryville, recognizing June twenty twenty-four as LGBTQI plus Pride Month in the City of Emeryville. And the proclamation is as follows. Whereas in the movement towards equal rights for lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, transgender, queer, and intersex people, a historic turning point occurred on June twenty-eighth nineteen sixty-nine in New York City with the onset of the Stoneroll Riots where LGBTQI protesters stood up and resisted police harassment that rose out of discrimination. And whereas in the decade since, civil rights for LGBTQI people has grown substantially, and pride celebrations have been taking place around the country every June to commemorate the Stoneroll Riots. And whereas even with all the progress that has been made, the rights of members of the LGBTQI community are still under attack as they continue to face discrimination and persistent efforts to undermine their human rights. And whereas during Pride Month, the Emeryville City Council reflects on the progress that has been made towards inclusion and equality for the LGBTQI community, celebrating the people who are living in their, living in their lives openly and with pride more than ever, as we also reaffirm the ongoing need for commitment to fostering justice and ever, as we also reaffirm the ongoing need for commitment to fostering justice and preventing discrimination based on sexual orientation and gender identity. And whereas from business leaders to professors to athletes and entertainers and all walks of life, LGBTQI individuals have achieved success and prominence in our society, and we honor the fortitude of those who have fought so that others could live authentically. And whereas our city and the entire nation draw strength from diversity of all kinds, with each individual contributing to the greater whole, and by affirming these rights and values, we all benefit. And whereas, the purpose of proclaiming Pride Month is to recognize and educate the community on the impact that lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, and intersex individuals have had on history locally, nationally, and internationally, and now therefore be resolved by the City Council of the City of Emeryville that the month of June is hereby proclaimed Lesbian, Gay, Bisexual, Transgender, Queer, and Intersex Pride Month in the City of Emeryville, and the pride flag will be flown in front of City Hall for the entire month, proclaimed by the mayor of the City Council of the City of Emeryville at a regular meeting held Tuesday, June 4, 2024.
Do we have anyone here to collect this? Or, oh, are you collecting it? Here you go.
Not while I raised my hand, but may I be recognized?
Yes, please.
I will collect it on behalf of the LGBTQI community, I guess. Thank you for the recognition, Madam Mayor, and I want to thank everybody in the city of Emeryville for being an inclusive and accepting place to live. I just want to take a moment, as I do at this time every year, to just share at a personal level that as a young queer person who came out in a Midwest conservative community in the 1990s, endured extensive amount of bullying, went through mental health crisis as a young person, relied on public and social services to, to be at times, and faced being unhoused and living through housing insecurity on account of my sexual orientation. Pride was a riot in 1969, and today it's viewed as a party. But in the spirit of understanding and recognizing that for many people, they don't feel comfortable. And today, in the unfortunate reality of the current national discourse around politics and identities, many people are being forced back into the closet. They're being persecuted at work, they're being persecuted in places they weren't before. And for many of us who, generations before myself included, fought very hard battles to ensure opportunity for everyone and equality in our communities, and to be really truly places where everyone who wanted to belong could belong. I always just raise awareness on suicide prevention, and I just offer to any person in this community, a member of the staff or their family who are dealing with gender identity, sexual orientation, or have loved ones who are going through mental health crisis, you're welcome to contact me or any of the resources that the city and the county have, and I'm happy to help you in that process if you need that assistance. Thank you, Mayor.
Any other members with any comments? Oh, Member Pryforce, yes.
So, there's a saying that the rabbit runs faster than the fox, because the fox is running for his dinner and the rabbit is running for his life. Richard Dawkins. That pride, sometimes, those of us who may not identify as queer, may not necessarily feel that it hits home unless we have a relative or a loved one who's also queer. But I want to challenge, just as one of the fathers of my church this past Sunday did, which was to challenge us to look at pride in the celebration of what has happened to the queer community as an extension of what happens to all of us who find ourselves as the rabbit. And that, that until all of us are free, none of us are free. And so, I celebrate pride, I celebrate all those who have had such an amazing impact in my life, who do identify as queer. And I look forward to all the new relationships and friendships that will come as a result of, of living in a society that embraces all of us. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else?
And then we have a second proclamation today. It's the proclamation of the City Council of the City of Emeryville, recognizing June 12, 2024 as Women Veterans Recognition Day in the city of Emeryville. The proclamation is as follows. Whereas Women Veterans Recognition Day is the anniversary of the Women's Armed Services Integration Act of 1948, was signed into law by President Truman, granting women a permanent place and opportunity for a career in the military. And whereas almost 2 million women veterans in the United States, its territory, and abroad, and nearly 163,000 women veterans make California their home, according to the California Department of Veterans Affairs. And whereas women have played vital roles in wars and conflicts through United States history, including serving as soldiers, raising morale, and spying on the enemy during the American Revolution. And whereas the passage of the Women's Armed Services Integration Act of 1948, women became a permanent part of the United States military, but the act continued to restrict women to 2% of the military population. That restriction was finally lifted in 1967 with the amendment of the Women's Armed Services Integration Act, which also opened senior officer ranks to women. And whereas through women, though women have been officially serving in the military since 1901, they have not always been considered, been considered qualified for veteran status and for the purpose of receiving benefits from the USDA. And whereas women who have served in the United States military are often referred to as invisible veterans because of their service contribution, because of their service contributions went largely unrecognized by politicians, the media, academia, and the general public. And whereas even after women were granted veteran status, issues of access exclusion and improper management of their healthcare remained. In the late 1970s and early 1980s, many of the contributions made by women in World War II were formally recognized through new laws, and this opened doors for women to take advantage of programs and benefits from the federal and state governments, and the United States Department of Veterans Affairs and other veteran services organizations. And whereas the purpose of the Alameda County Veterans Affairs Commission is to advise and assist the county Board of Supervisors on matters relating to veterans and their families as it pertains to meeting their needs for veterans' benefits for housing, food, shelter, transportation, and employment, including promoting, developing, and identifying the needs of all veterans and their families. And whereas the Alameda County Veteran Affairs Commission is charged with providing representation for all veterans' observance days, such as Women's Veterans Recognition Day, in effort to honor and celebrate the respective contributions of all service members, now therefore be resolved by the City Council of the City of Emeryville that June 12, 2024 is hereby proclaimed as Women Veterans Recognition Day, and every resident is urged to celebrate the many contributions of women in our armed forces proclaimed by the mayor of the City Council of the City of Emeryville at a regular meeting held Tuesday, June 4, 2024.
And did we have anyone here to collect that? Member Pryforce, were you going to collect it?
Collected? No.
Oh, okay. Did you have a comment?
Yeah. I'll wait.
Yes, please. Your comment?
Okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, I want to thank the council member who brought this up. And I want to also, since my last comments were about extending, extending that recognition to trans women and those who are female identified. And I also want to extend it as, I don't talk about it much because there's a lot of trauma behind it, but I am the son of a biological mother who was a police officer. And it's not easy. It's not easy being a child, worrying about what happens to your mother when they're out there. And so, I can only imagine for service women, and I would say all women and all female identified, who wear a uniform that can potentially lead to their loss of life in service to making all of our lives safer, more secure. I appreciate this acknowledgement, and for all of the families and communities that they touch. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Member Carr, thank you for bringing us.
With all due respect to, it was Member Bouders.
I'm sorry. Well, thank you, Member Bouders.
I would, I'll just recognize Laurel Plemeier, who is part of Vote Vets and Women in the Armed Forces Veterans Association, who requested this of each city in honor of their event coming up, and I made the request.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right. Item five, announcement of commission and committee vacancies. Madam Clerk.
I don't have any report tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Item six, council member special announcements and reports on meetings and attendance. Anybody? Special meetings? Okay. Item seven, city manager's report.
Nothing to report, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Item eight is ex parte communications. Members, please take one last look at the agenda. And does anyone have any ex parte communications to report for this agenda? No? All right. Item nine is public comment for the consent agenda and items on the agenda. Any member of the public that would like to make a comment on the consent agenda or items on the agenda can do so now for two minutes.
Yeah, Councilmember Bouders. Yes, it's this poster. Councilmember Bouders just proclaimed that Emeryville is a tolerant place, and there was another adjective he used, I can't remember, tolerant and believe it's an equity in tolerance. And I'm here to check that. Actually, I'm not checking, I'm just the messenger. It's the Mayor Welch here tonight will check what you said. And here it is. So, this is the mayor, okay, the mayor's straight from her Emeryville Twitter account, and you look at the last, last line, the second to last line. You can see she called me a fuckboy. And she did that because I, you know, I'm reporting on her. I'm the editor of the Emeryville Tattler, my name is Brian Donio, and I'm reporting about how she is a corporate Democrat. And that's not my opinion, I'm just reporting, and it's demonstrably provable she is in fact a corporate Democrat. She doesn't work for the people, she works for corporations. And so, for that, she called me a fuckboy. So, I would say that Mayor Bouders, or Councilmember Bouders, that's not very tolerant and not very equitable, and I think it's sort of unseemly that our, that our mayor, you know, checks people like that, that are, that are critical of our public policies. And so, I don't, I think Councilmember Bouders misspoke. And, you know, what's wrong with the truth being out there? You know, I think, and here's some truth right here. This is a direct screenshot posting of Mayor Welch's.
Thank you for your comment. Any other member of the public like to comment for two minutes?
Question. Association of Municipalities, Association of Municipalities, envoys a tri-regional authority agreement based on indemnity clause. Indemnity to clause to the EV standards shows a commercial lending request compared to how wind turbines are wondered. If an applicable expression of RZA means that you have design efficiency standards to electrical power grids compared to commercial land models, if expressionary applications to the state are identified based on today's administrative process efficiency to the EV standards, in the home heating credit, if we are standardizing questions of commercial lending based on an application of state and county parks, hydro turbines, solar panels, a horseshoe steel cord, two fishing docks, and in husband dairy models, the fish aren't seen as children, excuse me, the opposite gender, and their genetic efficiency. Octagon eight wind turbines, 1,000 solar panels, two Van de Graaff reactors, vacuum pump saltwater, hydro turbine, and put a boat underneath it, or double boil saltwater, at 1.583 kilowatts, for 10 gallon is 1 gallon of renewable steam. If we are justifying that to interpower authority agreements based on the EV standard efficiencies, is there a commercial application? And I would like to know, as a, as a regular citizen, I do not live in this city, is there any wind turbines in this city before the commercial EV budget is approved based on the collective filing and as today, as a member attending this hearing? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other member of the public wish to comment?
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. I am here speaking as interim president of Emeryville Chapter of SEIU in regards to the city's proposal to impose 6.2 deduction on our pay rather than make employees whole as was done in the city of Martinez when they had the same situation with social security payments pending. As you may have heard, the situation calls for drums, and we have lovely, wonderful, dedicated, tired, fed up, exasperated employees here tonight. We're tired, exasperated, and fed up because after about a year of negotiations, we're here having to advocate for ourselves again because so far, the city hasn't seen the good sense in taking care of their employees. Because as employees, employers, because as employers, you have yet to accept the reality that making your employees whole is the most efficient and logical path forward. I don't think you know how good you have it, that the people who work here is what makes working here amazing, that you have people who are so hardcore, so dedicated to their jobs, so dedicated to the city. You have things happening here that wouldn't happen with other employees because the people who work here are that cool. And they're cool personally, too. I've had people here help my family, they've helped me personally, I have mentors here, both professionally and personally. It's an amazing place with amazing people, and it's being undermined by the way you're treating us, by the way you're not recognizing that having to suddenly take 6.2% out of our paychecks has a significant impact on our ability to function in our lives, and ability to support ourselves and our families and our obligations. On a personal note, I'm here on this night, speaking here before you, and I'd rather be home playing with my three kids. They're up way too late.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you, Adrian. As I said, amazing people here, right? Kind, generous, thoughtful, and I'm sure that can extend to the whole city as well, it just hasn't happened yet. For me personally, I'm here getting texts, "I love you, I miss you, come back soon." For me personally, the deduction from my pay is about the equivalent to utilities. It's also about the equivalent to what we pay in outside childcare, so that I can attend city meetings to help move your projects forward. And it's also about the same, I mean, it's our car note, and none of those things are negotiable for my family, so I don't know how to cover that with this pending problem I'm facing that is solvable. We have means, we have resources. It can be done where there is a will, where there is a way. We have creative folks that I'm looking, we have been looking at creativity right now. I'm looking at can-do people. So, let's do this. Let's do this, okay? Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Any other speakers?
Hello, my name's Amber Evans, Community Development Coordinator and Vice President of SEIU. I've been here 14 years, and it feels like I've been through quite a few funding emergencies. Now, we're at an employee retention emergency. I was here when redevelopment was lost, that was in 2012. At the time, we had a $50 million budget. We lost half of it under one policy decision. We went down to $25 million. Four people were laid off. Our projects moved forward. The city doesn't even really seem to remember that or consider it a real crisis. Reserves were not touched. I was here when the city manager proposed, I think it was like 50 people be laid off, the childcare center eliminated. We got through that. One person was laid off. Somehow we can go from very big horrible math problems to getting down to something that we can move forward collectively with. I was here the day when we were all sent home with computers because COVID had hit and we didn't know when we would return. And we moved forward, huge projects and big initiatives, working from home, and we hired staff and we consultants to support those efforts. There's not been an earthquake since I've worked for the city, yet we plan for one. The, the council has longed in my tenure, talked about one-time money for one-time events. This is record-breaking inflation, crushing housing prices. There's loss of insurance or skyrocketing, skyrocketing costs for insurance. This is a crisis. And now, just now, this one-time 6.2 wage reduction for workers when they can least afford it, why not talk about one-time support? Why not assess the cost of three to five years of reducing the impact of works?
Thank you for your comment. Any other speakers?
My name is Ryan Fettis. I'm field staff for SEIU Local 10 to 1. I'm reading a statement on behalf of Matt, an SEIU member. I've already spoken for my colleagues today, so I won't repeat my words, but I do want to highlight one thing. You aren't just going to see a staff exodus, you're already seeing people leaving. In the last two weeks, two staff have announced departures for Berkeley and Oakland. You are in charge of retaining the functioning workforce. Well, what are the perks of staying here? How are you trying to retain staff? This is in reference to the 6.2% increase that members are going to see deducted from their pay, from their paychecks. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. Josie Aaron's with Camp, the Managers Association. I shared longer comments earlier and won't repeat them, but just wanted for the city council meeting to have on record that I'm sharing about the deduction and the way that it is negatively impacting our staff right now. We understand that this is a long-term benefit, but in the short term, immediately, right now, especially for our younger staff, this is just a burden that doesn't make it sustainable to be here. And so we look forward to working together to come to an agreement that is going to work for staff and work for the city because the city cannot work without us. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Any other speakers?
I'd like to defer my two minutes to Amber Evans.
Sorry, with the cold, my time management isn't what it once was. What I, I think I was breaking off on saying is that I think there's a way to package this as a one-time intervention. Rather than thinking of this as this scary nebulous, we're committing to something for many years. Let's bite off a chunk that we can make some certainty for staff, bring up some commitment, and do the math of that. It feels like what has happened is that we've continually come back to anything that affects staff. That's ongoing cost. That's the people versus the stuff. We always go back to the stuff instead of the people. But this is a math problem. We did it with the money that was paid for the last year's settlements. We can do it with the future years. What does it cost? How can we find funds for that? This is our collective crises. Retention and recruitment is a city problem. It should not be on the individuals with the least resources, and you can hear the stress that individual employees are under, to solve a math problem with our least resilient and least resourced when the city has not been able to solve that math problem. But it is certainly a math problem that can be solved. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Any other speakers?
Good evening, City Council. My name is Valerie Bernardo. I'm a Community and Economic Development Coordinator and a member of SEIU. I have been with the city for about four years, and I wanted to speak with you guys tonight about the 6.2 reduction in income for all of the staff members. I do have a statement I want to read that's coming from another, another member of SEIU who was unfortunately unable to be here. With due respect, SEIU members have come before you tonight to ask that you reconsider assisting us with the additional deduction of the 6.2%. Let it be clear that members are not asking for the city to pay their social security retirement, but to assist in offsetting this deduction brought on to them at no fault of their own. In all fairness, SEIU employees are already contributing to the CalPERS pension plan of up to at least 7%. Employees were hired with the understanding that they would not be contributing to social security and accepted the position as such. And on a personal note, I just wanted to bring it to real numbers. The 6.2% reduction in my pay equates to an 8.8% reduction in my take-home. That is a little over $600. That is 20% of my rent. That is a huge cost to employees. It's a huge cost to my family. I'm a single parent and I work extremely hard for the City of Emeryville. And I do that because I enjoy working here and I enjoy doing what I'm doing. But the reality is, with that kind of reduction in loss, I don't know whether or not I'm going to be able to continue to stay here because I have bills that are not going to stop coming in every single month. I still have to pay my rent. I now will have to rely on both paychecks to pay my rent because I can't rely on just the one coming in during the month. It's a huge financial impact, and I really want to make sure that you guys are considering how that really affects our day-to-day life. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Any other speakers?
Good evening, Mayor Welch and councilmembers. I'm April Shabazz. I've worked for the city for almost eight years now. Next month, I'm the Management Analyst and EDH. And one of my two points I want to make, I can't even read this, I'm wearing glasses. So one point I want to make is for the past eight years, I, my primary role has been to enforce the city's labor standards upon small and large businesses, ensuring that they offer a fair wage to employees, that they offer a fair process and full transparency. Many times, and most people may not know, is that I keep things kind of low-key because I work with the businesses to come up with creative ways to handle the impacts that paying higher wages to employees and making sure they pay predictability pay if schedule changes occur. I help them think of creative ways. And it just is difficult for me to have a clear conscience doing this type of work when we're embarking upon such a challenging position with our own employer here, the City of Emeryville, who is in the news for being the top in enforcing these labor standards. So that's one thing that troubles me. The second thing is being here eight years at the top of the pay scale, I depend heavily on the COLIS. And with this decrease in 6.2% for social security in addition to an anticipated withholding tax for the portion of the taxes that the city is covering, it's difficult. And who knows what else? An incremental increase?
Thank you for your comment. Any other speakers?
I just had a couple of other things. Basically, it's, it's difficult and it is keeping me up at night. And as much as I love the people that I work with here and the work that I do, I'm seriously weighing my options. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Any other speakers? Last call? Public comment is now closed. Item 10 is the consent agenda. Do we have a motion on the consent agenda?
I move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
You have a motion as second. Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Councilmember Bowders?
Aye.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce? Vice Mayor Mora?
Aye.
Aye.
And Mayor Welch?
Aye. Item 11.1 is a public hearing, introduction and first reading of an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Emeryville adding two new land use classifications to section 9-2.339. Welcome, Miro.
Good evening, Mayor Welch and councilmembers. I'm Miro Desai, a project planner on this. The last time I was here, it was in January, and, next slide, please. It was in January and we had a study session. The reason behind the study session was to explore certain land use classifications in our zoning code. The idea was to improve public health, safety, quality of life by deemphasizing certain auto-centric uses and personal storage uses that are typically land-intensive and are not the highest use for one-square-mile city. Also, the purpose is to deemphasize the reliance on non-renewable fuel sources for transportation, and finally, to promote alternative energy-related businesses that will be a benefit to the public at large. Next slide, please. So at the January study session, the council comments and directions were the following. Prohibition of car washes, gas stations, car dealerships, as well as personal storage units. In addition, the council acknowledged that prohibiting the above uses would make certain existing businesses legal, non-conforming. The council indicated that no changes be made to the auto body shops at this time. Next slide, please. In addition, the council directed staff to create a separate use category for showrooms for alternative fuel vehicles, also to identify appropriate size of showrooms and to allow them in mixed-use and industrial zones of the city. And finally, to create a separate use category for EV and green hydrogen charging stations and allow them in certain zones. Next slide, please. So regarding alternative fuel showrooms, staff researched codes of neighboring eight cities and found that these cities do not explicitly call out the sale of EV vehicles separate from your auto vehicle dealerships, that is, your traditional dealerships, nor do they call out EV vehicle showrooms as a standalone use category. In addition, in these cities, the language around showrooms is limited to whether showrooms are permitted in certain commercial and mixed-use zones. And in most cases, it does not dwell into specific development standards such as the size. Next slide, please. Staff, in its research, visited six showrooms in the Bay Area, Cote d'Medera, Berkeley, Palo Alto, and San Jose. The main purpose of these showrooms was, is to test drive vehicles and help with purchases, purchases which are done online. They typically store between three to 10 vehicles in the parking lot, and the size of these showrooms vary between 1,800 square feet to 5,000 square feet. In terms of how they operate, when a vehicle is purchased, most require pickup at a secondary location or the vehicle manufacturer's headquarters, or the vehicle gets delivered to the customer's home. Next slide, please. Regarding service stations for alternative fuels, typically, alternative fuel and auto-charging stations regulations are limited to whether alternative fuel stations are permitted in certain zones. In most cases, the regulations don't dwell into development details or parameters outside of our basic commercial retail regulation. Regulations for the EV charging stations are primarily intended to ensure that they are permitted and are compliant with the applicable building and electric codes. Next slide, please. So with that background, we are proposing the following changes to Title IX. First is creating two news, two new use categories. One is the alternative fuel vehicle showrooms. It basically defines that they need to be indoors and only for certain type of alternative fuel vehicles. And there is a maximum size of 5,000 square foot. Regarding alternative fuel charging stations, this is a pretty straightforward definition which allows certain accessory uses to be included as part of that. We also need to create a new definition of alternative energy vehicle. And, and the Planning Commission kind of worked on this. They wanted a more robust definition, and, and this is what they approved, recommended approval for. So what this definition does is two things. They wanted to make sure that the definition was future-proof in terms of sustainable technologies, so that we named as many as we can today, and then also included the other sustainable technologies. And the definition excludes what we don't want to encourage, and those are fuels derived from hydrocarbons. Next slide, please. So this is the table which kind of defines what is allowed and what is not allowed. So the changes are here to essentially, to prohibit car washes everywhere, to prohibit dealerships everywhere, to prohibit gas stations everywhere, and to prohibit personal storage uses everywhere. And there is an addition of two new alternative, two new use classifications. One is the alternative energy vehicle showrooms, which are allowed in the mixed-use and the industrial zones. And the second use classification is the alternative energy vehicle charging stations, and they are now allowed in the mixed-use areas of the city. Next slide, please. This is the final one. It's more of a cleanup. It is deleting references to service stations or gas stations as they occur elsewhere in the code. So this is basically being consistent with what is being proposed. Next slide, please. The Commission held a study session after your January council study session in March. And then at the April public hearing, they recommended that council approve the changes that I have outlined. The Commission was supportive of the proposed modifications. And as I mentioned, the, the only comment they had at the study session was to provide a more robust definition for the alternative fuel vehicle. Next slide, please. So in terms of environmental review, this is exempt under the general rule. Next slide. And so that is, that ends my presentation. We are recommending, the staff and Planning Commission recommends approval of the proposed changes to Title IX. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Miro. Any clarifying questions for our open, the public hearing? None?
Mayor Welch, if I just could add, I believe there's proposed amendments to the ordinance that was put online. We just want to make sure.
Correct, correct. So if you go back to the slide, the cleanup portion of the code. Couple of, one more back. This one. So this was the amendment that you saw today come to on your dials. So this is basically a cleanup that is being introduced in order to remove all references to the gas stations. Did you want to add anything else? No?
Does anyone have any questions for our open, the public hearing? No? Okay, this is a public hearing. Madam Clerk, the time is 8:39 PM. I now open this public hearing. Any member of the public that would like to come and make a comment on this public hearing item can do so now for two minutes.
In the view of the city's flat, I have the same alternative energy question of use of a hydro turbine, solar panel, and what was said as a design equivalent efficiency of an alternative fuel or energy creation in view of a microgrid as an application to some magical land use and land re, applications across state, county parks, as well as private and commercial development. The same alternative fuel or alternative electricity in the EV standard is the principal owner of not only Lotus Capital Management of Hydrocore International as a state indemnity and evaluation in TEDx. There are questions to uses of, in third world countries, the same design of burning trash and burning food as potting soil in view of wastewater treatment facilities or any of the treatment field of type providers. I do have questions based on the state and the guidance with here as the commercial REIT and commercial land model. There are some questions to that zoning based on my There are some questions to that zoning based on my understanding to how they see alternative fuel to the uses of recreational substances and the community's agricultural three and business two designation based on the standards of what's wondered as 503C11s or the view of 503C13s in the community of the house is paid for or not based on limited partnerships based on collateral credit lines. I personally have more specific questions related to the application with the fuel assembly itself. There are questions to the home heating credit as the home heating credit based on wonderments at state and county parks at designs.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you. Land Bureau Management.
Any other public comment on the public hearing? Right? Madam Clerk, the time is 8:42 PM. I'm closing public comment for the public hearing. Members, I will turn to you for deliberation. Yes.
Just want to thank the planning staff and the planning commission for bringing this back and working on as the council had directed and providing us a path forward for better land use in the city. This is one of a series of amendments and ordinances we've made that I think on the surface probably don't seem like much but are actually critical as a policy matter to directing the city toward a more sustainable future, one that is not reliant on fossil fuels but really thinks about how our community can be better served through energy and environmental practices that best match the needs of the planet and the people who live here. So with that, I'll make a motion to read this ordinance by title only.
I'll second.
Madam Clerk, a motion of second. The roll, please.
Councilmember Bowers.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Mora.
Aye.
And Mayor Welch.
Aye. Mr. City Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor Welch. Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Emeryville adding two new land use classifications to section 9-2.339, motor vehicle sales and services in Article III of Chapter II of Title IX of the Emeryville Municipal Code, adding a new definition to section 9.8.201A terms in Article II of Chapter VIII of Title IX and modifying Table 9-3.202 in section 9-3.202 Use permitted, conditionally permitted and prohibited in Article II of Chapter III of Title IX concerning certain auto-related uses and indoor public storage uses, sequit determination exempt pursuant to guideline section 15061, section B subsection 3. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve the ordinance.
I'll second.
Motion of second. Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Councilmember Bowers.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Mora.
Aye.
And Mayor Welch.
Aye. Thank you, members. Moving on to action items. Item 12.1, introduction and first reading of an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Emeryville repealing and replacing various municipal code provisions to eliminate or modify criminal penalties for code violations.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm Margaret Kotzebue. I'm special counsel with Jarvis Fay, and I'm here to present an item that is part of the city's ongoing process to decriminalize its municipal code, and we're looking at the Group Two amendments tonight. Next slide, please. So by way of background, the city's existing code includes criminal, civil, and administrative penalties that are used to enforce the code. In terms of criminal penalties, the city has infractions where it's are essentially fines issued to offenders. The city also has misdemeanors. Those can be a fine of $1,000 or imprisonment in county jail for no more than six months or both. And I also note that the city's infraction penalty also provides that any repeat violations past the third infraction within one year can be increased to a misdemeanor penalty, and I wanted to note that because it'll come up later on in my presentation. The city also has administrative penalties such as citations, fines, nuisance actions can also be used, or the city can withhold or revoke permits based as an enforcement measure. Next slide, please. In 2020, in recognizing that some criminal penalties could be used disproportionately to impact people of color, the City Council requested that staff bring forward an ordinance to eliminate some or all criminal penalties in the EMC while leaving in place civil and administrative penalties to enforce compliance. Later on, in September, in December of 2020, the council conducted a comprehensive review of existing penalties and provided direction to staff regarding which criminal penalties should be removed, kept in place, or further studied. Next slide, please. In December 2022, as a first part of that process, the council approved an ordinance that amended the penalty charts in the municipal code. The way the municipal code is set up in Title I, there's charts that indicate what's infraction and what's considered a misdemeanor. We amended those in compliance or in, to be consistent with what the council directed back in 2020. After that, we took back to the council in October of last year, the Group One amendments. What we did is we divided up the amendments into three groups due to the large number of codes that we needed to look at, and we called these Group One amendments. These were cleanup amendments, and we looked at 35 municipal code chapters and brought those codes into compliance with the penalty charts that we had amended back in December of 2022. And as a result of those amendments, criminal penalties were either eliminated or reduced in 45 of the city's municipal code chapters. Next slide, please. So tonight, we are looking at the Group Two amendments. I have them listed here. We were directed by council to take these to the council subcommittees. In April of, April 15, 2024, we took the three codes listed here to the Transportation Committee. We had scheduled the meeting for the Public Safety Committee to take place on May 21, 2024, but unfortunately, it had to be canceled due to a lack of quorum, so now all of these items will come forward to the full council for consideration. Next slide, please. Oh, and also I want to note that the Group Three amendments, we anticipate those, they'll warrant further study and research. Those we plan on coming back to council in the fall on Group Three amendments. So, did we, did we skip? We might have skipped one. Could you go back one slide, please? Yes. So before we get into the actual codes, the Group Two codes, staff also looked at the general penalty provisions in the code, and we looked at the infraction penalties. And we, in addition to the Group Two amendments, we also recommend elimination of that misdemeanor option that I talked about before. So as it stands now, any, if you have more than four infractions of the same code within one year, that can be escalated up to a misdemeanor under the state code, and we suggest eliminating that and keeping it at the infraction level. And when we were looking at the infraction code, we looked at how the state allows for infractions, and we looked at the government code that permits that, and we noted that the government code had increased the fine for a third infraction to $500. The city's a third infraction now stands at $400, so we made that adjustment. We also included new fines for building and safety code violations that had increased violation, increased fines, 130, 700, or 1,300 if infractions took place in one year, and 2,500 for each additional violation within two years. And the state code also requires a hardship waiver process for two or more infractions. We amended the code to add that in, and we modeled it after the hardship waiver process that's already in place for the administrative appeals. This is done through the city manager. If someone can claim that they have a good faith effort trying to comply and also have a financial hardship, they can request a hardship waiver from the city manager. And also, finally, if the council approves all of the amendments tonight, we would again request amendments to the penalty charts like what we had done in December of 2022 to again amend the penalty charts to match what we are doing here tonight. Now, next slide. Yes. So before we get into, again, the Group Two amendments, I thought it'd be helpful to go in the criteria of what we looked at in reviewing the appropriate penalty. First, we also, I'd note that we generally followed what staff originally recommended back in 2020 when this was originally looked at, but we also looked at whether enforcement of the penalty could be evaded by individuals. We looked to see whether swift enforcement was necessary for health and safety reasons. And while we noted that staff did not usually use the criminal penalty, it was rarely used, staff noted there was a deterrent effect especially for health and safety reasons and to prevent the likelihood of environmental fraud or environmental harm in terms of building codes. We also looked to see whether or not state law had already provided a regulatory scheme or a criminal penalty as a remedy and whether or not we needed it in the city code. And finally, while we were looking at the codes, we determined that a few of the codes needed substantive changes, not just changes to the penalty, but changes to the code itself due to changes in state law. Next slide, please. So I direct you to Attachment B to the staff report. Here, I've listed the 15 municipal code chapters and the recommendations. The recommendations are indicated by strikeout or bolded language or additions, and I'm going to try to get through them rather quickly. What I've done also is further categorized all of those codes into several different categories. So the first category are those codes which we do not recommend any changes to the existing municipal code penalty. That would be for the fire code, we would suggest to keep it at an infraction. For weapons, it's illegal to own or possess certain types of weapons in the, in the city. We thought it should be kept at as a misdemeanor infraction. For keeping of vicious animals, we also thought for health and safety reasons to keep that at as a misdemeanor. And for filling out grading permit applications, if someone files a false statement or data, we thought it was important to keep that as a misdemeanor to act, like as I mentioned before, as a deterrent. Next slide, please. The next group of amendments we looked at were those municipal codes where we wanted to keep the, or recommend keeping the criminal penalty, but also suggested adding an administrative citation remedy. First, I note that any violation of the code is subject to administrative citation, but in those instances, we thought matched or was a good tool in your enforcement toolbox to keep as an additional remedy. We put it into the code. For instance, with fireworks, it's illegal to discharge fireworks in the city. We kept that as an infraction but added an admin citation remedy as an alternative remedy. For community events, these are special events that require permits. We, we suggest keeping that as an infraction and also adding the admin citation. For parks, the city manager can issue rules on when they open, when they close, what conduct can take place in parks. We suggest that remain as an infraction and also add the admin citation remedy. And in terms of signs on public sidewalks, these would be temporary signs, advertising or signs that are put in place. These are subject to permit, so we believe that for pedestrian safety, it was important to have this as an infraction, and we also added the admin citation remedy. I also note that the Transportation Committee recommended the changes on the signs and the public, signs on public sidewalk ordinance with one slight alteration to ensure that the admin citation remedy is an alternative and not a cumulative remedy. Next slide, please. We also, the Transportation Committee also suggested that we repeal a municipal code chapter in its entirety, EMC 4-11, which is the Personal Assisted Mobility Devices or Segways. I think it's easier to call them Segways. The city has an existing code that regulates that, and, and I believe it was an infraction remedy. We checked with PD and we checked with state law. The state vehicle code already has a regulatory scheme in place to regulate Segways, and the police have indicated they can rely on the vehicle code to enforce it. So we suggested removing this chapter in its entirety. The city also has a code that regarding interference with free ingress or egress of the public right-of-way, which would be your streets or sidewalks. The way the code is set up, there's a general prohibition against interfering with free ingress or egress without a permit. You can get a permit to, if you wanted to temporarily do load construction materials or temporary interfere with the free ingress or egress of the right-of-way. You can do that with by permit, and we suggest keeping that as an infraction. And also, the code also includes a section on interfering willfully and maliciously, obstruction of the public right-of-way. And we looked at that and noted that the state penal code already has a code in place to deal with these situations, and police indicated that they would rely on that section in enforcing willful and malicious obstruction of public right-of-way. So we again suggest that we remove that section 5-1405 in its entirety. Next slide, please. The next category are the code sections that need substantive changes due to changes in state law. The first one I'm looking at here right now is the Vehicles for Hire section. That's your taxi cab ordinance. In 2017 and in 2018, the state government came out with new regulations on how cities can regulate taxi cabs. This was in response to taxi cabs complaints about how Uber and Lyft were not as heavily regulated as the taxi cab regulate, this taxi cab industry. Essentially, the changes we made were amendments to include a new requirement. The regulations only apply to taxi cab companies that substantially are located in the city, and there's, we followed the government code's definition of what a substantially located is. We also added new requirements for obtaining a fleet management permit, and we took those straight out of the government code. Those are background checks and other safety issues regarding taxi cab operations. We suggest maintaining the infraction remedy but also adding a new fine of up to $5,000 and a seizure remedy for violation of a permit after hearing by the chief of police. This is also authorized by the government code. Next slide, please. Bingo games. So it's my understanding you don't have a lot of bingo games, if any, in the city, but if you do, there's a statute in place. Under state law, it's a misdemeanor to, for anyone to receive a wage or make profit from a bingo game. They're supposed to be only for charitable purposes. And state law also provides that a fine of $10,000 can be deposited with cities that have ordinances in place. So we suggested amending the code to add that $10,000 fine, so if it is issued, the city would be sure to be able to receive that fine in its city coffers. All other violations, we suggest be subject to infraction for bingo games. Next slide. And the last proposed amendment, this is the largest amendments that need to be made. In 2018, the state passed the Cities, or the Safe Sidewalk Vending Act. This was done to encourage sidewalk vending as an opportunity for low-income and migrant communities, and the state changed how cities can regulate these types of vendors. First of all, criminal penalties are prohibited by state law, so we removed all criminal penalties from the city code. And instead, the state established a new fine schedule, fine schedule for those who have permits and those who do not. So we added that fine schedule. We also added an appeal procedure for the penalties. The state also distinguishes between a roaming and stationary vendor. Someone with a cart is considered a roaming vendor. Someone who has a fruit stand in the corner would be considered a stationary vendor, and there's different requirements on how those can be regulated by state law. So we put those changes in. The state also does not distinguish between the selling of food or merchandise in its definition of state vendor. The city's current ordinance, the sidewalk vendors were only for food, and the peddler ordinance dealt with merchandise. We combined the definition for sidewalk vendors to match the state's definition. So now, food and merchandise vendors would be covered under the sidewalk vendor, and therefore, we eliminated reference of peddlers from Article II, since that's no longer necessary. We also thought it was important to add a prohibited items list to what people can sell by sidewalk vendors. So we prohibited the sale of alcohol, tobacco products, cannabis, and other similar types of items. And finally, since there's a cross-reference in the farmer's market ordinance, if we make these amendments, we'll have to change the cross-reference, and we've done so with the amendments here tonight. Next slide, please. So that takes me through all of the proposed changes, and we recommend the city council waive first reading and introduce by title only the ordinance and to identify it as the Group Two amendments and repealing of Chapter 11 of the Segway ordinance in its entirety. And that concludes my presentation, and I am available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Members, any clarifying questions for our call for public comment? Member Pryforce?
Hi, thank you for your presentation. The distinction between the part focused on building, building-related infractions, the distinction between commercial and residential, or whether it's a single-family or multi-unit, does that change in any way what those infraction costs are?
No, they're just, in fact, I looked at that because I wanted to know what the definitions of, it just says for building and safety code violations. So I think that would apply across the board. The government code section that made those changes also included short-term rental violations and was focused on that, but it's my understanding that there is not a permit in place for short-term rentals. So it's just for building and safety code violations across the board, whether they're residential or commercial.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other clarifying questions? Member Pryforce?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The part about public signs, does that include political signs? One of the things that happens a lot is people come to me and they say, well, I got in trouble for placing my campaign sign here, but yet, this person, you know, I'll name them, like Barbara Lee or, you know, somebody higher up on the political food chain does it, and yet, and then they're confused. They're like, well, don't they know the law better than we do? And so there's a lot of confusion around that. Can you, does that cover how, yeah, public signs are posted and why is there not equity around that?
Good question. I think, I don't think it does. I think that's in a, is it covered? Yeah, I've got the question.
I believe the elections code, I'll ask the city clerk. The elections code covers political signs, and there's a section on that.
Yes, I believe Councilmember Bowers is correct. Basically, in the city of Emeryville, they're only allowed to be placed on private property.
And I believe that that's the confusion, is that many have contacted me and have shared that it's, it's not, they're not treated the same way, depending on who the person is that's placing the sign. And so, so that confusion is something that I wanted to know if that is addressed outside of just the election code.
I'm looking at the Chapter 34, and it does not look like it's called out. So if it's considered a sign, the sign means any structured device material which either directly or indirectly advertises, informs, or identifies persons, businesses, commodities, or services. So I'm not sure if it's covered in this.
My reading of that ordinance is that political signs would not be covered under that section.
I would defer the city attorney's interpretation.
Last call for clarifying questions for public comment. Right now, the time, is now time for a public comment. Any member of the public wishing to make a comment on Item 12.1 can do so now for two minutes. Any speakers for Item 12.1? Seeing and hearing none, public comment is now closed. Members, I turn for, turn to you for deliberation on the item. Vice Mayor Moore.
I'll make a motion to waive the first reading and introduce by title only the ordinance.
Do we have a second?
Sure, I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Councilmember Bowers?
Aye.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce?
Nay.
Vice Mayor Mora?
Aye.
And Mayor Welch?
Aye. Mr. City Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor Welch. An ordinance of the city council, the city of Emeryville, repealing and replacing various municipal code provisions to eliminate or modify criminal penalties for code violations identified as Group Two amendments, repealing Chapter 11 of Title IV, electronic personal assistive mobility devices in its entirety, sequoia determination not a project and exempt pursuant to SEQUA Guidelines, Section 15378, subsection B, subsection 5, and 15061, subsection B, subsection 3. Thank you.
Do we have a motion?
Just like to make a comment on the ordinance. And I just want to thank you for all your work and legal staff as well for this very complex and comprehensive process. You know, this is, seems like mundane stuff, but it's actually really critical to the good governance of a municipality. It has been a very long time since the city did a comprehensive review of its code structure, and we found a lot of places where we had inconsistencies, inaccuracies, noncompliance with state law. And I think that when you look at the code, it should be as clear as possible for people as to what it is that we expect as, you know, standards in the city for regulations like these. I also think that we don't need to criminalize everything in the community, and that was the purpose and undertaking. The police department has more important things to work on than things that we found when we began this process, like misdemeanors for spitting on the sidewalk, or not spitting out gum, or not picking up dog poop. I mean, those are pretextual reasons for why we have some of the problems we've had historically in the United States, and we have undertaken this process, I think, in good faith, both to be more transparent and clear about what our priorities are in the city, but also, I think, to put the focus of public safety in places it belongs and not in places it doesn't. So I'll make a motion to approve this ordinance.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Councilmember Bowers?
Aye.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce?
Nay.
Vice Mayor Mora?
Aye.
And Mayor Welch?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item 12.2, a resolution of the city council, the city of Emeryville approving added scope of work for the Sustainable Streetscapes paving project. And who do we have up?
City Council, I am Ryan O'Connell. I am a senior civil engineer in the Public Works Department, and I'm here to present on the Sustainable Streetscapes project. Item 12.2 tonight. And you have a few action items before you tonight. We are going to be looking at added scope of work to be added to the Sustainable Streetscapes project. Back in December 2023, you approved a scope of work for this project, so we'll be looking at a added scope of work on Hollis Street to be added to the project. We'll also be looking at a, authorizing a contract with Bay Cities Paving and Grading and adding additional budgets to their contract, and then also looking at reallocating funds to add into that budget, and then also approving the SEQUA for this project. So with that, I'll get into the presentation. So, next slide. So Hollis Street. You know, when I first interviewed in the city, I did not even know where Emeryville was on the map. I'm from Southern California. I flew in, landed, took an Uber into here, went to Hollis Street, and I was like, whoa, what is this place? There's a seagull on that building. What is this? And loved, fell in love with Hollis Street, the brick buildings, all that. And Rudy's Can't Fail Cafe out there, had lunch there after my interview. It was awesome. Loved Hollis Street. This is a great street of Emeryville. It's the trunk of our city. It is the main transit trunk of the city. It is a truck route, it's a critical emergency route, has high levels of pedestrian activity, and with all that, it's a desire line of bicyclists, and we don't have a bike lane on it. But if you go to our general plan, it is a transit priority street. With that, we prioritize transit as a mode of travel on this street. If there is pressing demands of different modes of travel on the street, we prioritize transit on the street. Next slide. So in our ATP, which was approved last 2023, October, 2023, Hollis Street, on this section of Hollis Street, which we're looking at today from 40th Street to Powell Street, there is a red dotted line on this section, and it is, says in ATP, as we touch the street for the next paving project, or next time a developer comes to this section of the street, we should be studying this, seeing how we can fit bike and ped improvements on this street. So here we are, we're touching the street. Let's look at that. Next slide. So why are we touching it now? We always hear this about government. We don't talk to each other from different departments, you know? This is probably maybe the nicer way of saying it, left hand talking on the right hand. We're doing that, you know? We have our private development group that reviews the private developer projects. They look at the frontages that are going on, conditions of approval that are going on, and we have our capital improvement program engineers that are working on projects. And we are looking at Hollis Street. Both departments are both reviewing Hollis Street at the same time. We're like, hey, let's line up these two projects. Let's try to make something that makes sense. So the biomed realty development is working on a project on 53rd and Hollis. They're building out their campus. There's a condition of approval where they are repaving Hollis Street and 45th and Powell Street. We started negotiating with them to actually have the city take on that paving. We have, most recently, actually come to an agreement on that, where the city is going to take over that paving. And the city will take over that paving and do it as part of our project. By adding that paving to our project, we're able to get a better economy of scale, get better pricing on our overall project, and we have been successful in doing that. And we have added the rest of Hollis to our project, going from 45th to Powell Street. So adding more paving to our project, getting more economy of scale, getting better pricing, better bang for the buck for the taxpayers of Emeryville. So we've added 45th to Powell, to Hollis Street, due to recent projects in the area. There's been a lot of truck traffic from the Emery apartment projects that recently completed on Hollis Street. Additionally, there's been a lot of fiber projects that have gone up and down Hollis. If you drive down it right now, there's a lot of utility, you know, trenches going across Hollis Street. It's bumpy, you know? There's a lot of manholes that are kind of out of shape right now. So Hollis Street is due for paving. It's good timing to do this project right now. Next slide. So looking at Hollis, we took it as a, you know, as a whole. You know, we see the need of, you know, the community, what we want to see. We want to see all the transit amenities. We want to see sidewalks that meet our minimum needs. We want to see, you know, protected bike lanes. We want transit-only lanes. We want transit shelters. But also, you know, this corridor is a primary arterial. It serves all the recent developments that are, you know, coming online in the city, the Emery Apartments, biomed realty. The majority of these developments are right along Hollis Street, but they're, you know, just off of it. So, you know, all of the developments being offset by a block off of Hollis Street, it means a high volume of, high volumes of vehicles that need to be served to and from this arterial. So we need to maintain the turnpockets along Hollis Street, and we need to keep transit moving throughout this whole corridor. So, next slide. So if we try to fit everything that we want here, we don't really have the room. In fact, if we try to fit everything all in one block, and this is one, with one transit shelter, we're 29 feet over. The cross-section of Hollis Street is 44 feet from curb to curb, and if we go from building to building, it's 60 feet. There's pinch points throughout that. So not to go into all the details right now, but we even have pinch points where it gets down to 55 feet, and then even smaller, if you look at the fire services that come out, there's trees, tree wells, and all other sorts of items along Hollis Street. So without a full, very extensive rebuild, it's very hard to fit everything on this corridor. Next slide. So back to our Bible, the city's general plan. So we look at Hollis Street, and it's a transit street. We have one bus every eight to nine minutes. If you look at the Emery Go-Round service and AC Transit Service during the peak hours, during the AM and PM peak hours. You look at the Park Avenue District and the section between 45th and 53rd, it's a pedestrian priority area. We are expecting high levels of pedestrian volumes, especially when all these developments and all the biomed realty campuses come online. And don't forget, it's a truck route, all the industry on the south end and the north end, all the trucks are coming through this on Hollis Street. When we have construction coming off and on of, near Hollis Street, that's where we divert the traffic of the trucks to go up and down Hollis to get out of the city and stay off the residential routes. Next slide. So where do the bikes go? We know Hollis Street is a desire path because A to B to destinations along Hollis Street. There are parallel bicycle routes, you know? Horton Street, there are some very world-class, very nice world-class facilities coming to Horton Street. Some of them are almost online fully. There's raised Class 4 bike lanes along, between 53rd and 45th. There's a diverter plaza that we just closed 53rd, just the other day this week. A pedestrian plaza will be put in. And there's alternative paths through Horton Landing Park and Spur Alley as well. Next slide. So I'm going to go through just what can we fit on Hollis Street with all these pressing demands along Hollis Street. So we will go through the corridor. I'll try to go a little bit quick. Let's go. So next slide. So we did hire our designer, M&amp;S, who's designing our Hollis Street, you know, pavement design, to also do an engineering concept and study of what bike, ped, transit designs can happen on this corridor. So we went through various concepts, and then what came out of this was the ped and transit concept, was what led and what we went with. So, next slide. So the project study area was from 40th Street to Powell Street. Next slide. And we gave, what we ended up with was these objectives. So prioritize pedestrians and transit, have an eight-foot minimum bus loading width, ADA requirement. This is going in line with AC Transit Design Guidelines. 11-foot minimum bus lane widths at the curb, six-foot minimum curb extensions where we can to increase the ped crossing safety, and then add these street tree curb extensions and add some urban greening across the Hollis Street corridor where there's a lot of like concrete jungle-ish type treatments around, you know, where the PG&E building is, if you can picture that. So looking at this, this is Alvarado Street in Monterey. So this is an example treatment of what we're looking to do on Hollis. Next, next slide. So here we are, just orient yourself. I'm going to start on the 40th Street side and work my way up north, all the way up to Powell Street. Next slide. So here's a typical Hollis Street street section. We have existing sidewalks along the whole Hollis Street corridor of about eight-foot sidewalks. And what we'll be trying to do is put nine-foot transit shelters, possibly up to 11-foot, you know, widths for those transit shelters, 11-foot bus lanes, 10-foot turn lanes, 10-foot travel lanes, and then extending two to six feet on the east side of the street. Next slide. Next one. So between 40th and Park, we're not doing a ton here. There's not a lot of room, but we also know that the art building is soon to come in the next few years, so we didn't want to mess with this block too much. But at the intersection of Park, we did do a lot of pedestrian bulbouts. So we were able to bulbout anywhere from four to six feet on each end, really reduce these these crossing distances through the intersection and increase the pedestrian safety. We had to offset a lot of the turn lanes through here and just increase overall the ped safety through this corridor. Next slide. And, next slide. And then, so the section between Park and 45th, we're able to now eliminate a few parking spaces, but add urban greening through these street trees. So adding the street trees, we're able to add more shade to the corridor. And we're able to, as you can see, as we get closer to 45th, build out the bus stop. Next slide. So at the intersection of 45th, and then to the north, we're able to build out these bus stops up to 10 to 11 feet. And as you can see at the intersection, we're able to bulbout the intersection to reduce these crossing distances for the crosswalks. Next slide. And from 45th to 53rd, we're able to, where the PG&E building is, where it's just all concrete and just very hot on, you know, summer day like today, it is, we're able to add these urban greening treatments and street trees are throughout. So next slide. We get to the intersection of 53rd, where the biomed campus has added some Class 4 bike lanes. We are adding some green boxes at the intersection, so some bike boxes at the intersection, and creating bulbouts for the transit stops, and adding, you know, about 11 feet of, you know, bulbed-out areas for the transit stops, and decreasing the crossing distance throughout. Next slide. And this section between 53rd and Stanford, we're able to add more street trees throughout that whole section. And then at Hollis and Stanford, we're able to bulbout through this whole section, eliminate a right turn, slip lane, and then increase and add a bus stop to the far side of, the southbound side of Hollis Street at Stanford. Next slide. And then here's the big one for the project, maybe the most pricey add-on to this project, is eliminating the slip lane at Powell and Hollis, and adding in some green infrastructure treatments at this intersection. One of the comments that we've received from the B-PAC and the Transportation Committee is opening up that green triangle section of that slip lane area to making that, you know, connection from Pellidoo Park towards the Greenway connection going across Powell Hollis. So we'll be looking at that as we refine our designs. Next slide. So the action items before you today, we have six of them. So the first one would be to approve the added scope of work for the Sustainable Streetscapes paving project, where we add the Hollis Street ped and transit improvements between 40th Street and Powell Street. And the second one would be to authorize the city manager to enter into a contract with Bay Cities Paving and Grading. Third is to approve additional payments up to 3.5 million into the contract. Next slide. Fourth is to move the money around to pay for said budgets. Two is to add more money to pay for said budgets. And then third is the SEQA determination for the overall project. Here for any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Members, do we have any clarifying questions before our call for public comment? Member Bouders?
Thank you for the presentation. At the Transportation Committee, an inquiry was made about whether Hallack Street would be included between Park Avenue and the city border. It's not referenced in the staff report, and we didn't receive an answer, so I'm seeking it tonight.
Yes, we'll be able to fit that into the project.
Okay, so we need to then amend the list? Is that what I'm seeing on the whereas clauses? Because it's not listed with the rest of the streets.
Can add that as a whereas clause to fix that part of Hallack, sure.
Okay, thank you.
Any other clarifying questions? Member Moore?
Thanks for the overview and the background on Hollis and the struggle with a bike lane there. Can you maybe elaborate on some of the, you know, were there any bike lane options that were looked at? Not necessarily a, you know, from the, in the ideal world, you highlighted the total distance needed for the best case of everything, pedestrian, transit, bike. But, you know, sometimes in a world of compromises, you know, you look at the bike lane experience on Hollis, it's abysmal. Bikers take their hands, their lives into their hands when they get on that road. A painted lane with maybe a small buffer, is that something that could be worked in? The, did you need the full transit lane for a good transit experience? Could a bus kind of pull over? Does it need all 11 feet? Can it go eight feet and cars can kind of safely maneuver around it? Pedestrian bulbouts? Could you even kind of do double duty with a, maybe a protected, protected sections of a bike lane that force vehicles to slow down as they round corners, which is the intent of a pedestrian bulbout? I'm just looking for any sort of creativity that may have been used to investigate this before we just say, all these bikers who find themselves having to use Hollis, you know, good luck to them, right? That's what I'm struggling with here.
Yeah. Well, without going too much into that detail, yeah, we did seek creativity in the early stages of this. I did a trip to Santiago, Chile. I had photos that I had in a staff meeting, you know, trying to fit three-foot bike lane sections on a sidewalk on Hollis that we were trying to fit in as an option behind a bus shelter, as some of our early designs. So we were trying to squeeze what we could into this project. What it turned into is trade-offs, you know? And, you know, fitting bike lanes into Hollis, what it really means is you can't have ped bulbouts, you can't have transit bulbouts if we fit bike lanes on there. So that's even if we have Class 2 bike lanes through the corridor. So if we have, if we put the bike lanes on Hollis with the 44-foot cross-section, we have to carry them throughout the whole corridor, you know? And so once we do that, you have, you've traded off now the ped and transit benefits. So we've looked at also the cycle track option on the west side of Hollis Street that we've seen, and there's been some emails shared around of a cycle track option as well. And that, that's one, once you carry that through, you can no longer bulb out and do ped and transit bulbouts throughout the whole corridor. So that's the trade-offs of having those options.
Just one more, and then I need to call for public.
Just to follow up?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I just, in terms of the studies looking at these trade-offs, if I wanted to be able to get my hands on those or those available? Because I'm interested to know, what do trade-offs look like for transit? What trade-offs look like for pedestrian to, you know? So you don't have like the, maybe the perfect best case for all three, but maybe something that works? Thank you.
I think, sorry, permission?
Yes, please.
The, I think the trade-off, to put it in the simplest terms, is you either have a bike lane in that space, or at the pinch points, you have ped bulbouts and transit bulbouts. You're essentially not able to do both. You're not able to fit both. I think that's the simplest way to put it. We can also produce additional diagrams, if that is desired, to further illustrate the point and clarify the trade-off.
That's what I was asking, if that's available and if somebody can send that to me.
We can make that happen, yeah.
Member Carr, you had your hand raised?
Thank you, Mayor. I just, thank you, Ryan, for doing this presentation. I think I've, me and Councilmember Bouders have sat through it, through the Transportation Committee and the AC Transit meeting, and I appreciate what you've presented. I just want to also, maybe, we are, we do have options for the bikes. I just want you to elaborate on that in the, on the, the streets that are congruence, are congruent to the, oh, I'm sorry, yes, a parallel to the Hollis Street, which are not too far off. So, and I also, it looks like this whole plan, which prioritizes the buses and the trucks, and it's a mixed-use. Just wanted to make sure that, because it's a mixed-use corridor, and it is fairly used by buses, and, and I think it's imperative to prioritize Vision Zero, and I understand that you have taken that into consideration by providing options for the bike lane on the other streets, the parallel streets, as well as considering ped safety on Hollis. So that, that is a priority and something that aligns with Vision Zero. So if you can elaborate on that, I would, for the general public, that would be very much appreciated.
Yeah, so a lot of the improvements, you know, on Horton Street have been put in by private developers. We've done the review of these developments as they've gone in and seen the traffic volumes that are going in there. So we've been able to guide them into these treatments to make those corridors safe as volumes have gone on there. So, yeah, there's Class 4 bike lanes that are raised, Class 4 bike lanes that we feel are going to be some world-class facilities that people take a lot of photos of, and something that Emeryville will be very proud of once they're completed. And then, so that's even the diverter on Horton as well. And then there will also be Spur Alley is, you know, also a very good example. There's some recent pedestrian intersection crossings that have been put in as Level 4 traffic calming from the Emery Development that also recently have been put in. And then, you know, looking ahead, another parallel facility is going in on San Pablo Avenue in, you know, hopefully three to five years, but we'll see. And that's another parallel facility that's on the horizon. And if you look on the west side of the tracks, maybe we can look at, Shellmount Street is maybe being a parallel facility if you look that far away, but that's a little bit too far away, obviously.
I'd also like to mention that there's an upcoming item for council where we are planning to reduce the speed limit on Horton to 15 miles an hour to improve the quality of that facility as well. Thank you.
Right. Now's the time for a public comment. Any member of the public that would like to come and make a comment on item 12.2 can do so now for two minutes.
Hello, council. I'm Sam Gould, a member on B-PAC, and I'm here to talk about the inclusion of the draft Hollis design on the paving plan. I believe the design as is is counter to the stated goals of the city on building in all ages and abilities after transportation network, and does not fulfill the ATP requirements of Hollis as a study corridor. Concrete bulbouts will almost permanently prevent the inclusion of cycling infrastructure along Hollis, a corridor that already has high use by cyclists. I appreciate the staff for their hard work preparing this concept, but I'm afraid it was rushed to align with the paving schedule of the adjacent property. The 44-foot minimum rideaway on Hollis could accommodate a two-way cycle track on one side of the street, which can accomplish the same goals as bulbouts of decreasing crossing distances for pedestrians, and can accommodate transit islands while adding additional safety for those commuting by other modes. This is an opportunity to further our commitment to Vision Zero. Despite providing a parallel bike route on Horton, people will still cycle here, and I want it to be safe for them, too. Consider the city's stance on San Pablo, where we determined that parallel bike routes are not sufficient because we should be connecting residents directly to their destinations. I encourage you to direct staff to explore the cycle track concept more deeply, and implement with quick-build materials instead of concrete so that it can be given the time to be properly studied, while still including the permanent removal of the slip lane at Powell. If the impacts of including a cycle track are thoroughly studied and found to be infusible, I would support this project, but committing the concrete now will make it impossible in the future. And as an example for how bulbouts can accommodate bikes, the intersection of MacArthur and Telegraph are bulbouts that reduce the crossing distances for pedestrians while still allowing bikes to wait in the protected intersection. And we really, this isn't a sacrifice we're making. We aren't giving up pedestrian safety just for bikes. They can work together to build our commitment to Vision Zero. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. My name is Ryan Lau, External Affairs Representative at AC Transit, the lesser of the two Ryans. AC Transit is excited to work together with the city of Emeryville to, it's been a long day, sorry. Transit priority and accessible improvements along Hollis Street as a part of the city's Sustainable Streetscape paving project. The proposed improvements before you today will improve access for transit riders getting on and off the bus for our Line 29 and the city's Emery Go-Round frequent service. Hollis Street is an important north-to-south transit street and crosses through the center of the city and is a central part of the city's transit network. It's particularly important because of the Emery Apartments and the biomed campus that will generate a lot of additional traffic, as well as, you know, a lot of users that will utilize that pedestrian and transit improvements. As such, the city has identified Hollis as a transit city, a transit street in the general plan. While AC Transit is definitely supportive of complete street approaches, as Mr. McConnell mentioned, Hollis is unfortunately not wide enough to accommodate all of the modes. And so, given that Hollis is designated as a transit corridor, we really support the current proposal on the table and respectfully request that the city approve the project as proposed. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Any additional public comment?
In view of the Transportation Act, I have a question related to the application of what is wondered to 503(c)(6)es and 503(c)(8)es based on indemnity clauses of the Community Investment Fund. How this is wondered in view of bond holdings not only at schools, juvenile, jails, airports, and qualitative reassessments based on indemnities of wholesale? AC Transit BART and BART bonds are not publicly displayed on any advertisement, any stations, or on any of the buses. How that is wondered to bond ETFs that are publicly traded, an indemnity to hold against the city and the county is requested? I'd ask that this city council, if they believe, knowing that their bonds are held in an ETF, if it should be publicly displayed to the city residents, is a question. Not only have I asked this at a city level, I've asked this at a county level, and through and applications of Ames National Corp, have encouraged the application of a sell-ride agreement in view of the Fisher-Gantons, as well as the LeCobes in view of indemnity of Hatt. We would be invoking this in the Davis Last Name Estates. I would, again, would ask that this be applicational of variance. This is not seen on any of the buses, not only inside and outside. This is not seen on any of the BARTs on the train. This is also not seen at any of the BART facilities or location. How this is wondered in view of municipal bond revenue tied to grant wonderment, there is indemnity of application. We would be asking that as a symbolic asymmetry. There are trade associations that could justify that compared to private financing. How that is wondered in view of people that vote?
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Seeing and hearing none, public comment is now closed. Members, I turn to you for deliberation on the item. Vice Mayor Moore?
So I'm very familiar with the alternate bike routes on the parallel streets, Doyle and Horton. Doyle is a beautiful bike pedestrian street. It's a joy to bike on that. Horton is good and getting better, but the fact remains that there are many businesses and destinations on Hollis Street, and there are many bikers who need to use Hollis Street, and they cannot do so safely. If it wasn't such a bad biker experience, and if we were not committing to put that into concrete and make that a permanently bad biking experience, I could accept some type of compromise there. But as it is, I think on paper, it sounds great. Oh, look, you have Doyle, you have Horton, Hollis is transit. But the reality is that every day, there are bikers who are taking their lives into their hands, going on this street, and I'm not convinced that there are not some more creative options out there that might require some trade-offs, might require some compromise. But I think it would be a significant improvement to transit, significant improvement to pedestrians, and also to the bicyclists who find themselves on Hollis every day. So for that reason, I would support all the resolutions except the addition of Hollis, which I think requires further study. which I think requires further study.
Any other comments? Member Pryforce?
I just want to respond to the public comment that was made, which was a suggestion that we actually identify how public projects are funded by particular bonds. And I think that's a really good idea because it encourages residents and workers, those who are visiting Emeryville, to know that it took voters, their voice, to say, hey, this amenity that you're enjoying was because the people went to the ballot box and voted for it, or that council members and city staff worked together to create this measure. I think, I think it would be, it's a good idea. It's a good, especially when we think about a city of innovation, that being able to show how we can all come together as a community, as a village, to be able to support new projects and new things happening, I think that that'd be pretty cool, to be able to say, paid for by measure such-and-such, or powered by this bond or that sort of thing. And so, I think, so I said, say thank you for making that comment.
Any other comments? Member Carr.
I appreciate Councilmember Mora's bringing up that it may become a worse experience for bikers who may still continue to use Hollis. So, I just want to determine, these, I have, I know where these parallel streets are, too, but if you could please shed some light, I know there are businesses on Hollis, but if these bikers were accessing those businesses, are there, is there a way to park your bike on Horton or another parallel street and just walk to where you were going to go to the business in Hollis? Is there a way to, or signs to divert the bikes to the parallel streets? I mean, I think that's part of safety considerations, so if there is an answer to that, I would like to hear.
Mayor? I think there's permission being.
Yes, so, from Hollis Street, all these streets intersect Hollis Street. They're all bike boulevards, so starting from 45th Street Bike Boulevard, 53rd Street Bike Boulevard, Stanford Avenue Bike Boulevard. So all of them have adequate sidewalks, bike facilities. They're all, you know, parallel or intersecting perpendicular routes to get to these other bike facilities, the parallel bike routes. Even Spur Alley is another one that kind of intersects into Hollis Street. If that answers your question.
Thank you, Ryan. It does answer it. I have a follow-up, Mayor, if I may.
Yes, please.
If you could give me an estimate of, say, someone trying to get to Ike's on Hollis, and they are, they are on a bike, is just an example, and I know the people in this room are familiar with these streets, maybe you could give an example of the time that it would take to park on a parallel street for the bike to get to Ike's, have their sandwich, and get back on the bike? Or, or an estimate. I just want to see how accessible the street is with, by a bike, to get to a business on Hollis.
Yeah, I guess I, where's our starting point?
Where is their start, that's a good, yeah, I mean.
I could give you an example. So, last week, I was biking from here to my house. So, I live north, so I could take Hollis, I could take Horton, I could take Spur Alley. So, I was right out here on Park, and I took Hollis, and there was a lady who was riding right with me. She's a little bit in front of me. And I got to 45th and cut off and took Spur Alley, and she stayed on Hollis. And so, when I got up to Doyle, I could see she was like about two blocks ahead of me, and she was a little faster than me, I won't lie. But, but, so, that gives you like a little bit of a sense, like I took that Spur Alley, which is a cutout, which is definitely slower, but I could still see where she was, it wasn't that much slower.
I, thank you so much. So, what I'm, I'm just trying to make sure that the, it's not a big inconvenience to the people who are riding their bikes to take, to do what Paul just said he did. You could have been faster, Paul. Just kidding.
Do you have anything else to add? Member Bowders?
Thank you. You know, when, when we think about individual routes, it's important to look at them and understand what could be done to optimize them. But it's also really important to look at them in the context of the general plan at large. And when I look at the general plan, the vision in the general plan for bike and pedestrian connectivity is a granular connected network that allows people to move safely in a timely manner throughout the city. And so, to the points that have been made, I just want to accentuate, like, the city has been building that plan on the premises of that plan, which included completing the Emeryville Greenway, which we've done. The Horton Street and Overland Route is intended to be the north-south central bike route through the city, and with the improvements coming from the BMR project and the Emory Project and the future Overland Project, those are, that route will be completed and separated. Doyle Street was done, and it has a little piece left to do on it. And then, we have, outside of that, on either side of the city, the Shellmount 40th Street Cycle Track will take people all the way north-south and across the south part of the city in San Pablo Avenue, which, yes, Ryan, three to four years at most, should be a completed network. And when you look at Hollis Street, as much as I, as someone who moves through the whole city on a bicycle, would like to have a bicycle route on every street, the reality is that San Pablo and Shellmount 40th are much wider corridors, and so they accommodate both transit and active travel readily. But Hollis is one of the original streets of the city, and its warehouses and old industrial uses build right up to the right-of-way, and so they really constrain what the engineers and the public works folks can do. I explored some of the very questions that the BPEC members and I hear Vice Mayor Mora asking about, are there ways to integrate all of these features? But the reality is that there is no central transit route through the city, which has several important purposes. It serves a very large office and industrial sector through the center core of the city with everything from the Emery ground to the 29 bus, and it also now connects to the Amtrak and the Transbay Bus Terminal. And so, we have actually spent a good number of years, five to eight years, really courting AC Transit to bring more increased bus service here for people who have mobility limitations, for people who need to go between parts of the county that aren't accessed by BART like West Berkeley and West Oakland. This was intended to be a corridor route that prioritized transit. In fact, five or six years ago, I sat at this dais, and we were petitioned by a number of businesses on the north Hollis corridor to actually remove the parking lane and turn them into transit-only lanes and have them flip during certain times of the day, where we would actually have parking on one side of the street, but based on the travel mode, buses would have more frequency on the other side, in the afternoon, it would switch. And we ultimately decided it needed to be studied a lot more, and it was probably very cumbersome to implement. But the reality is there are really constrained spaces here, and for as much as I, at a personal level, agree with some of the public speakers and Vice Mayor Mora, the vision for the city contemplates there being a transit priority route through the core of the city. We're diverting all the vehicles off of Horton Street to make space for bike and safe movement. We're going to have a speed limit reduction potentially, and San Pablo Avenue is going to have bus rapid transit that is intended to move AC Transit buses in a certain way. But this is really the core spine for Emeryville's transit corridor, and that was the same part of a general plan vision that has this bike grid, which, by the way, has 40th, 45th, 53rd, and 65th as its cross routes on it, right? So, we are building this space, and the staff are bringing this to us, I think, and Hollis is a complicated corridor, and I agree with Councilmember Mora, people want to take the route that is most convenient for them. But at the end of the day, someone who is more confident on a bicycle, perhaps like me, will still use that route, and somebody who is perhaps newer to a bicycle or wants a safer or slower route, or is taking precious cargo with them, we're giving them those alternatives. They, they will decide, this may be three to four minutes longer for me to get from A to B, but I like the peace of mind of doing that. And so, I don't want to, I don't want to put a hold on completing this project. I understand, we don't have to do this, we could do quick builds. But the reality is that we are trying to fulfill a vision on this in a timely manner. We have the funding now. There are a lot of uncertainties about the future of funding for transportation and infrastructure projects around the state budget. So I personally think this is something that we should move forward with. I don't do that like haphazardly. We had a really robust conversation at Transportation Committee about it, so I'm comfortable supporting it with one small amendment after the discussion is finished.
Any other comments, Vice Mayor Mora?
I'd like to thank Member Bowders for pointing out some of the consideration points, especially that of the general plan, which is to prioritize transit. You know, there's currently buses on Hollis. It certainly, I would imagine it's going to get a lot better, even without a full, perhaps, 11-foot dedicated transit lane. And I assure you, every biker on Hollis are very well aware that there are parallel streets, but the reality is that they're on Hollis, they're on Hollis for a reason. That's the most direct route, that's the most, that's where their destination is. I'm actually, I'm a quite experienced biker, and I'm still shocked at just how bad the experience is on Hollis. And that's what's giving me pause here. And, you know, we do repaving once every 15, what, 15, 20 years. This is a once-in-a-generation opportunity to not condemn all future bikers on Hollis to the status quo. So I'm asking this council to pause Hollis, which doesn't compromise the rest of the repaving plan. Let's take a closer look at what can be done. It doesn't have to be perfect, because we already know that we have to recognize trade-offs here. And I don't think that the trade-off type approach has actually been explored thoroughly. That's, that's the sense I'm getting. I didn't see it in the presentation, and it seems like the, there was more kind of idealized concepts around these bulbouts. But I think we do need to strike a balance where we don't throw the bikers on Hollis to the wolves here.
Any other comments? Member Carr?
I would just like to highlight that there is pedestrian safety in consideration on Hollis, and this, this is something that the city has been working towards for a long time. It is Bike and Pet Committee, so I think that we have done a lot for the bikes, as Ryan has pointed out, and as Councilmember Bowders has worked so hard on that. I think this, this would be a welcome, a welcome sign or a welcome improvement for pedestrians, people on, in wheelchairs, people with disabilities who are really trying to access public transportation on that corridor. So I would very much support it, and I would move this item pending Member Bowders' comment.
Would you, I would, oh, I'm sorry. Can I just ask if you are going to make a motion to add in the third whereas clause to include Hallock Street between Park Avenue and?
Absolutely, yes.
Thank you.
But before we.
I did make the motion.
Oh.
I just had one more comment.
Yes, please.
Just regarding Member Carr's point about pedestrians, I, I completely see a painted, maybe partially protected bike lane as a highly complementary to the pedestrian experience and as a possible alternative to a full bulbout in terms of its ability to slow down vehicles, especially as they're rounding corners. So I just wanted to note that. And as I mentioned earlier, I'm fully prepared to support all the, everything that's proposed, with the exception of pulling out the Hollis work.
I think I'm the only person here that really doesn't take a bike as a mode of transportation, but I do take.
I don't either.
I thought you rode a bike.
I, no, I don't.
Okay, well, Member Carr and I, but I do take the 29, and recently started taking my younger son on the 29, and had, he's four, and so it's a very fun experience for him. And you see the level of activity during certain times of the day, especially the morning, where there's a lot of transit activity and a lot of pedestrian activity. And you see pretty frequently the almost very dangerous situations, and so I'm very excited as someone who's taking their young child on this corridor to see the improvements around safety and just making it more accessible for people who want to not always have to use a vehicle. The 29 is a straight shot over to his school. I could get back. It's nice to take, and we can just spend time together as a family. I hear the concerns and appreciate the debate that has happened here this evening. I do have to agree with Member Carr and Member Bowders around just the feeling around capacity, and we've also heard from staff, and just the capacity limitations and just understanding that we have a little space to work with. This was something that was already identified in the general plan, and just hearing from experts around what is feasible, and I understand the concern around perhaps wanting to do a deeper dive, but it sounds like these concerns were brought, and because we are a bike-friendly community, and that is something that we pride ourselves on and we value, I do not think that it wasn't something that was just cavalier and just thrown away as just, we already have decided that this is not something that we can do. I am not getting the feeling that that was, what was put into the research here. And so, I, I am comfortable moving forward, as is with the amendment for Hallock. And so, Member Carr, you wanted to make a motion, is that correct?
I, I thought I already did make the motion with the amendment.
Yes, do we have a second?
A second. Member Carr's motion.
We have a motion, a second. Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Councilmember Bowders?
Aye.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce is absent. Vice Mayor Mora?
Nay.
And Mayor Welch?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, members. Item 13, Department head reports?
As the Planning Commission meeting was canceled for me, we have no report.
Thank you. Item 14 is future agenda items from two council members, any?
I do have.
Yes.
I would like to propose a study session to either, I don't know if there was one, if there was a farmer's market in Emeryville, I would like to bring it back, or I would like to propose a study session to explore the viability of a farmer's market in, in the city of Emeryville. I have data here that, that shows that it supports, promotes vibrancy, well-being.
Oh, Member Carr, I'm sorry to interrupt. Actually, there is an update on that. I can share with it, share it with you offline.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, no, not a problem, sorry.
Thank you.
I was supposed to share that with you. My apologies, I had forgotten. Vice Mayor Mora?
I have one future agenda item. This is for the, if council would refer to Sustainability Committee, an agenda item to review the power capabilities at our parks, in particular Doyle-Hollis Park, and evaluate improvements, including increasing the capacity or redundancy of circuits serving the parks to allow us to meet our sustainability goals, which is to avoid forcing permitted park users to use a generator for park activities.
Would that be something that Sustainability Committee?
Would like us to send it to Sustainability.
Yes, are we all in agreement for that? Sounds good. Any other future agenda items? Member Pryforce?
Yes, I'd like to add a future agenda item, the tenant right to organize, which we sent to the city attorney to review, and he responded with a memo after due diligence. And so, I'd like to invite that we consider tenant rights to organize, to unionize, similar to our neighboring city, San Francisco.
Would you be agreeable for that, going to Budget and Governance Committee?
Yes.
Okay, do we have support for that, to go to Budget and Governance?
Yes.
Okay, we've got majority support for that. Any other future agenda items? Member Pryforce?
Yes, I also like us to consider San Francisco's tenant right to counsel. Yes, I also like us to consider San Francisco's tenant right to counsel. Member Bowders, about a year ago, asked the question, well, how do we solve homelessness? And looking at the success of the tenant right to counsel, which means that a tenant in the city of Emeryville would be able to receive a lawyer during an eviction process. And the city of San Francisco is the only city in the state of California that has the tenant right to counsel. And it has prevented over 5,000 people from becoming homeless. That the numbers are 4% of tenants are able to have a lawyer present during eviction, as opposed to, I believe it's around 86%. In New York City, where I'm from, it's 1% of tenants actually have that right. And so, I believe that that's something that I'd like for us to consider implementing in Emeryville.
Would you be agreeable to that going to Budget and Governance?
Yes.
Is there a majority of support to send that item to Budget and Governance? Yes?
Yes.
Okay, there's, all right, majority of support. Any other future agenda items from anyone? Member Pryforce?
Last one, which is the Pledge of Allegiance that I would like for us to review, restoring the Pledge of Allegiance to be recited at, during council meetings, which I will demonstrate.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And just a reminder that the "under God" was only recently added, and from my review, that was what the point of contention was, us removing the Pledge of Allegiance. And so, I believe that Pledge of Allegiance can be restored if we remove "under God" so that it would become much more ecumenical to Emeryville residents and workers. So that's what I'd like to add to the future agenda.
Is there a majority of support for that item? There is not. Madam Clerk, the time is 10:04 PM. This meeting is adjourned.